Hour of 7 o'clock. That's the call to order for the Riverside Township District 208 Board Meeting. Thank you. Had a hard time getting the sentence out. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would note that Dr. Skinkis is not with us this evening. It is his eldest graduation from eighth grade. So that's why he's not here tonight. Would you take the role, please, Ms. Nardi?
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Ms. Ross Cough here. Ms. Eleanor?
Here.
Ms. Budford?
Here.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Here. For recognitions this evening, we do have a couple of recognitions. Dr. Freitas?
Good evening, our board members. Firstly, we would like to recognize our outgoing student board member, Ms. Claire Harrison, and I believe our board president has an award and recognition.
I will read the --
Okay.
Do you want me to read it first? Okay. The resolution reads, "Whereas Claire Harrison served as a student advisor to the Board of Education of the Riverside Brookfield Township High School District Number 208, Cook County, Illinois during the 2021-2022 school year, and whereas she gave conscientiously and generously of her time and energies during that time, whereas she served with dedication and great distinction and gave outstanding service to the faculty, staff, administration, students, and community, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Riverside Brookfield Township High School District Number 208, Cook County, Illinois, that this expression of esteem and appreciation of Claire Harrison and the great benefits which have accrued to the school by reason of her unselfish service to be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting of said board and assigned copy of this resolution to be presented to Claire Harrison. And the Board of Education in witness whereof do hereunto affix our signatures and seal at Riverside, Illinois this 24th day of the month of May 2022."
Congratulations. Congratulations. Do you want to take a few minutes and offer our congratulations to Claire directly? Ryan, do you want to start, please?
Sure. In my never-ending quest for brevity, I've got to say --
(laughing) Okay, I'm timing you.
Yes, you're welcome, all of you. Thank you, Claire. You've spent the year focused and invested on providing a voice for others to be better informed, better in tune, and better in positions to work on behalf of these communities served by Riverside Brookfield High School. I'll borrow the words that Tom Jacobs had last year as the student board representatives attended their last meeting, and I'm paraphrasing. "Thank you for being a part of the civic process. Now that you have begun, more will be expected because our communities are composed of those who serve and are served." Excuse me. And that community and civic service is extremely important to the health of our communities. So go forward knowing that you have the ability, experience, and knowledge to continue serving others, to keep working toward a better place for everyone to inhabit. There's no doubt that the struggles that our future generations will face will be tough, but it's because of you and people like you that we have hope that the best of our nature will persist and lead toward better bonds and healthy, productive futures for everyone willing to be a part of our community. Best of luck to you, and always know that you have had a hand in making a difference. Go on and continue what you have already -- what you already know how to do so well. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
No, I just -- Claire, it has also embraced the process even before this. She works as an election judge. And so, you know, we're just ramping up, you know? We're moving on, and I'm sure we'll see you in more places.
Just want to thank you, Claire, for all your time and effort. You've brought so much. Enlightened us on a lot of different perspectives. I mean that respectfully. And, you know, you did a fantastic job. We're very fortunate to have you as a student advisor. So thank you for everything.
Ms. Gasko?
I just want to say thank you, Claire. In spite of all the things you had going on, you were very diligent and you knew the great responsibility that came with this role. And I thank you so much for representing the student voice so greatly and so responsibly. Thank you.
Mr. Welch?
I talked to Claire before the meeting, and I was sincere in my offer that I made to you. So if you ever need to cash that in, just thank you for all your time and effort.
Happy for the IRS, too? Yeah? Okay, I'll listen to you all. Claire, thank you very much. I know that you are involved in a lot of things, and yes, you made time for this and you made it a priority. So thank you. I know that you were interested in the workings of the board before you joined the board because we heard from you prior to you joining the board. So great job of just continuing that on, and I know that you're going to go on and do great things. Thank you.
So thank you. I think my colleague did a wonderful job of summarizing. You've been an incredible asset to our group, and I think your ability to get into complex issues and understand them and provide your perspective from the student and from your background is truly appreciated, and I personally wish you all the best in your future endeavors. So thank you. So Claire Harrison, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry.
And I could just quickly add, you know, Claire, I got to see you at drummage in the football field. I got to see you in the badminton court. I got to see you at the Mada UN conferences. You really represent, you know, the best of RB. You know, you made us proud of you, your family, you know, and it was a pleasure working with you. You helped me draft correspondence to go out to the community. I mean, you're a superstar now. You're going to be even better once you go to college and beyond. So thank you for your service. It was a pleasure having you as a student board member.
Thank you, Claire.
Hi, folks. Continuing with student recognitions, I'd like to recognize right now Olivia Lozada, FCC LA student that participated in the state competition. She received a gold medal in frosted cakes. Olivia, were you able to make it today?
Did she bring her frosted cakes?
And now introducing our state math team, okay? No particular order. Our algebra one team, when I see your name, please come on up. Bobby Mandel, come on up. Bobby? Avi Panapan? Avi, please come on up. Avi, come on up. And stay up here with me, okay? Congratulations. Am I strong? Am I strong? Come on up.
That's a great shirt.
Thank you. Lily Zhang? Lily, are you here? I'm not seeing Lily here. Luke Byrne? Luke? Luke, are you here? Come on up.
Thank you.
Daniel Demonte? Daniel, are you here? Ella Hurd? Ella, were you able to make it? Liam Kaiser? Liam? Mac Schurman? Mac, were you able to make it? Will Cecilert? Will, were you able to make it? Come on up. Congratulations. Val Spivasek? Val, were you able to make it? Jacob Isaguirre? Jacob? Come on, Jacob. Sam Royer? Sam, I know I saw you here. Come on up, Sam.
Yes, sir.
Ethan Damanow? Ethan? I know I saw you here. Jillian? I know Jillian. I don't see Jillian. No Jillian? Caroline Mareto? Caroline? Able to make it? No Caroline? Okay. So guys, let's give it up for our state math team. Congratulations to our ladies. And last but not least, we would like to recognize our state champion diver and state record holder for diving, Harrison Nolan. Come on up. Harrison.
Representative Zaleski is here. Did you want to come up and say a few words?
Yes. He's got a busy agenda.
It's a two-part recognition for state divers.
Harrison, if you can come back up for one moment.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Zaleski. I'm a member of the Illinois General Assembly along with Senator Steve Landik. The state of Illinois honored you for your achievement, and we're all very proud of you in Illinois. We're all very proud of you from the region, and this is an acknowledgement of that. We'll do a resolution for you when we return, and congratulations. You made us all proud. Your family should be very proud of you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You got it, bud?
Yeah, guys. Thanks. All right, thank you. Harrison, thank you very much. Good luck, Harrison. Thank you. Good God.
Go Kentucky!
Have a good weekend. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And Dr. Freitas, you did mention the diving coach as well, correct?
Correct, yes. And Ms. Amy Phillips, excuse me, Ms. Amy Phillips, coach of the year. So guys, let's give it up for Ms. Amy Phillips.
Any other recognitions? That concludes our recognitions?
Correct.
Okay. We do not have a Student Association report, I don't believe, for this evening.
I don't see that.
No, they're not here. I think they just completed their election, so we won't see them until the fall. We said goodbye to them previously. Any visitor statements this evening? Anyone here for visitor comment? Okay. Everyone's welcome to stay for the meeting. We are going to get into the business of the board if you want to take a few minutes and excuse yourselves.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Congratulations, everyone. Good job, Luke.
I can't. He's like, who said that?
Okay. Do we have any discussion information items for the board? There's none on the current agenda or any additional discussion items the board would like to see this evening or in future agendas? Looking both ways. Moving on to the reports, there's no president's report this evening, but we'll move on to the assistant superintendent's report. I believe Dr. Smetana is presenting quite a bit of information.
Good evening. My reports tonight will present the board's financial information through the month of April, which represents 83% of our fiscal year. Beginning on Board Book Page 6 is our monthly summary report. You'll see the total operating revenue for the month was $1,242,725, with 45% of that coming from property tax and CPPT, 16% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and 15% coming from federal and state reimbursement. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,088,743, with 74% towards salary and benefits, 14% for purchase services, and then 4% for operations and maintenance and special ed tuition. The summary of revenues on the next page shows that the district has received 99% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is similar to this time last fiscal year. To date, the district has also received 99.73% of our budgeted property tax, which includes both the fall and the spring collections. So the difference that we're chasing is about $57,000. Also, as a reminder, I talked about this at the last board meeting, but Cook County is switching over to a new integrated property tax system, which will cause the fall collection to arrive possibly as late as December or January of next year. And so we will need to continue to watch the timing of this collection as well as our fund balance so that we can continue to operate next fiscal year. The summary of revenue shows that the district has spent 78.9% of our budgeted revenues for the year, and this amount is pretty similar to this time last fiscal year. As always, I included for the board the statement of revenue and expenditure report for our board accounts as well as for our activity accounts. When you look at our activity account report, keep in mind that the negative fund balances -- the negative account balances actually represent a positive fund balance for those accounts. We do have a large balance that's being carried in our testing account that will go down significantly once we pay the college board bill in June or July. And then just informational, for next school year, I met with Quest, which is our food service provider, and we discussed they'll be increasing the cost of 20 items for purchase in the student cafeteria by 25 cents and four items by 50 cents. Just wanted to give the board a heads up that this is -- we always revisit the pricing at the start of each school year, and given the cost of inflation and the difficulty in getting some products, I was surprised to see that this is all that they were recommending for the start of next year. And that concludes our report for tonight.
Are there any questions for Dr. Smetana?
Off the top of your head, when does that contract expire, if you know?
I believe --
You just did it last year.
I believe this is our second year, so I don't know. I can't remember how long it was, but I believe this is our second year of the contract.
Yeah, it wasn't here, so.
So I believe --
That's okay.
I want to say it was four or five years.
Okay.
I feel like it was five.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Moving on, Dr. Freitas, principals' report, please.
Good evening again, our board members. Teaching and learning, the final day of school is tomorrow, Wednesday, May 25th. Can you all believe it? We have the final day, final finals, then we have rehearsal on Thursday, and then Friday is the big graduation. So good luck to all the students on your final exams, and thank you for a great year. I completely know it hasn't been easy. Thank you to all the staff, maintenance, teachers. With all of us working together and with the board and our soup and district of -- there's no way we have a successful year. Again, it wasn't perfect, but moving forward, learning happens, students were engaged, and I will say overall was a very successful year. Summer school begins on Monday, June 6th. I have linked the summer school academic and athletic offerings. Everything's done online, and if you need support, people are welcome to go to the business office. For the 2022-23 school year, RB will be supporting two pilot programs, eliminating absolute zero from grading and blended learning. I did receive a question from the Board of Education just asking about more information, and I'll share a brief summary. First point is the case against zero. First of all, this is in URB. For first and third quarter, the lowest grade a student can get for the quarter is 50%, you know? And our staff currently has done this one sheet before. We're just formalizing this and bringing it together so we can learn together. So what is the case against zero? It is the intentional elimination of zero when grading so as to be more equitable and accurate about student performance when issuing grades. Why? According to experts, the zero is an inequitable and inaccurate figure for grading that motivates and disturbs students' academic performance. What's the purpose of this pilot? To examine the impact of eliminating absolute zero from teachers' grade book. This is a voluntary pilot. We have 20 teachers signed up, and these are the commitments of the teachers throughout the school year. They're committed to eliminating the zero in the grade book for the 2022-23 school year, examine the impact of zeros on student grades, motivation, and growth, participate in one summer cohort meeting PD session via Zoom, participate in six pilot cohort meetings throughout the school year, reading and review a variety of research-based articles about the topic, identify and explore grading practice that create equity concerns, and discussing the individual findings. So as I said, we're building upon existing practices. You know, we're going to bring it together, learn together, read together, and really see the impact, you know, of zero. Because too often, when a zero is calculated and overall average, right, it's almost impossible something for students to catch up and to be motivated to do the work. And the end of the day, when the business of getting students to learn, right, whether it takes one try or five tries, when the business of getting students to learn and to be equitable when reporting their academic performance. The other pilot that the board has more information about is the blended learning pilot. What is blended learning? Blended learning is an instructional methodology and philosophy wherein students control the pace, the path, and place of their learning. It's good teaching. It's differentiated teaching, and it is personalized learning. Why? To meet the individual needs of all students. This is a voluntary basis. We have 13 teachers signed up. We have five teachers from the original pilot in 1920. Teachers have certain commitments to be part of this pilots. They will structure at least one class as blended learning model the entire school year. Then we use instructional data to differentiate instruction for students as needed to allow for personalized learning experience, participate in ongoing PD and training, and share experiences through collegial collaboration and presentations to the faculty. So these are two pilots that are moving forward at RB. We believe in them. We believe they're best for kids, and we'll be reporting out, you know, as often as we can to the Board of Education to let you all know how things are going.
The blended learning is sort of a reboot. They were interrupted for the original pilot because of COVID, and it was going really well based on the feedback that we received at the board level from around the spring of -- or winter of 19 --
Pre-March of '20.
Yeah. Pre-March of '20, 1920, right? So I'm excited for this reboot.
Without getting too far into the weeds, can you tell -- can you give the overview of what it looks like here? I know you're saying it's choosing, you know, where, when, what, but what does it look like here? Does it mean that students don't report to a particular classroom on given days, or what does it mean?
Sure, I'll share what I can. So again, so blended learning, right? Students control the pace, right? We all learn differently, right? Sometimes people need accelerated learning. Sometimes people take their time. The place of learning, there's students that learn in the classroom, students that learn outside the classroom, online. Path, right? Working on multiple projects to reach the standard. So how it looks here, I know teachers teach in the classroom, facilitate outside experiences online, so that they're learning, using technology, using paper, using classroom discussions, online discussions to really move learning forward. So that's kind of how it looks here. Everybody does it a little different, and I guess we are learning, you know, in this pilot on how to be, I guess, the ideal, you know, blended model school. But it's going, it's moving, and again, blended means, right, where students have flexibility in how they learn, right? We move beyond the traditional just sit and get, you know? You get a little bit. Now, here, three paths to learn. You could work on this, you could work on this, work on this, based on student strength. Maybe they're kinesthetic learner. Maybe they're auditory learner. Maybe they're, you know, a better reader or writer. So combining all those skills to really meet, you know, a certain standard or a certain target in learning.
So there are three different levels within the pilot based off of where the teacher is entering with a certain skill set, and only the third level will kids flex, which means that they will be able to leave the classroom on certain days and not have to report on certain days. And they will not start the semester off that way. It will be -- that will be sometime, I believe, in the first quarter, where those teachers will allow those students to do that. And all of those teachers are teachers that participated in the pilot during the 1920 school year. The other two phases of teachers that are participating in the pilot will focus more on blending their classroom, but primarily the students will stay in the room together as one.
So I guess that's kind of where I'm questioning is attendance is taken care of and with the ones where you're talking that larger flex where they're getting out of the classroom, there's no concerns with how that registers for our attendance accountability things?
No, we've done this -- when we did the original pilot, we allowed all of the teachers to flex, and we learned that some teachers are entering the pilot all in different spots, and so that's why we set the pilot up the way in which we did for this coming school year. But when -- we take a different approach than most schools. So when you're flexing out of the classroom and students don't need to be there, they still come to the class and they report, and the teacher takes their attendance, and then they can leave. And we have a separate code for them, so it doesn't impact our attendance at all. And then in June, we also have our annual technology report, so we'll be providing more information in detail about the blended pilot coming up and the PD that we recently had for teachers as well.
Okay. So tenants will be taking, students will be supervised, you know, but depending on the teacher, whether they're in their class, they may take a different approach when it comes to blended learning. Continuing with my report, school culture and operation. For final exam, we've had therapy dogs here, okay? They're not drug-sniffing dogs, okay? Sometimes we see dogs and we see police, okay? These are therapy dogs. Pickles, okay, absolutely fell in love with pickles. You know, it's kind -- do therapy dogs help students calm down? Unless it's their anxiety, you see a lot of kids petting their dog right before their hour and a half, two-hour exam. So it's been calming. It's been a positive to many students. I want to thank our student services team. They've managed everybody involved in getting the therapy dogs here to RB. Activities and athletics, graduation rehearsal is this Thursday. Students are going to report at 11:15. We're going to go through the program, and then we'll be having our senior picnic or barbecue right after. While it doesn't look so great, so we may do something indoors, okay, Claire? But we want to definitely bring everyone hanging out, bring the yearbook signed, eat together, share a good laugh. But that's the plan. And another reason why, folks, we do the graduation indoor, right? It seems cold and raining the next couple of days, so I know people have told me, Dr. Freitas, we love the outdoors, you know, COVID. People are free to wear their masks. We're bringing your own personal protective equipment, but we are doing it indoors. That's what's best for the majority.
It's also live stream, correct?
Yes, it is also live streamed, so on rbtv.tv. And then we will have our overflow rooms as well, so people can watch it here like on a 16-inch screen, you know, if they choose to do so. And then the big show graduation is at 6:30 on Friday, May 27th. Students will report at 5:30, and then we'll be getting ready to celebrate the class of 2022. And board members, that concludes my principals' report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Dr. Freitas? Okay. And moving on, last but certainly not least, Ms. Harrison's final student advisor report. We did all receive a copy of your exit comments, so thank you. I don't know if you want to summarize that or other items, but I just want to make sure you knew that we did receive those.
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you for this opportunity. It's been really interesting to see the inner workings of something that, you know, school is something you participate in forever, but you never really know how it works behind the scenes. I'm really excited to see the changes RB is making to be more equitable and just -- I mean, it's a great school, but we can always do better, and it's exciting to see that we're moving in that direction. With the student advisor program, I'm really excited that you've adopted that into the language of board and that we have some great people coming up, and I can't wait to see what they do next. And yeah, thank you for a year.
Thank you, Claire. Old business, I don't think we have anything, Dr. Smetana, under this area?
There's no update, and the Facility Advisory Council is working to set up a meeting for earlier than the board meeting.
Okay, thank you. New business, approved student advisors for the 2022-23 school year.
And we'll keep that resolution?
And you don't want to --
Oh, let's have some --
Right, so Ms. Gasko and Mr. Van Horst took the lead on this and interviewed our candidates. Do you want to give a few words about that, and then we can move on to the adoption?
I'll go first. Thank you, Ryan. Should have prepared something. No, it was a really awesome experience for me personally to be able to meet with students, to be able to hear from them. All of them were very well-prepared. You could tell that they really were committed to being chosen for the position. So it was really nice to be back in front of students. It was -- it boiled down to like, okay, who's going to be representing the student voice? And I know for me personally, when it came down to choosing students, it was what Dr. Freitas said earlier. It had, you know, it was people or students who were well-rounded, who were in a lot of different activities already, who were going to have access to a lot of different student voices. So that was important for me. So that's how I ended up reaching my recommendations, but it was -- I'm glad I did it. And Claire, thank you for doing such a great job because that was part of the reason why I was motivated and excited about serving on the committee. So thank you. Thank you for showing us that it's an important position.
Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I can just say that the problem, we had six candidates, and every one of them came in enthusiastically. It was exciting to be able to narrow it down to two and feel confident that we're going to have a good student voice next year as well. So thank all of the students for interviewing, and we look forward to hearing their input.
Okay, without further ado, Ms. Towne, or would you announce our new student advisors for next year?
Very exciting. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the appointments of Asia McKay and Paulina Carmona to serve as student advisors to the So thank all of the students for interviewing, and we look forward to hearing their input, so.
Okay, without further ado, Ms. Towner, would you announce our new student advisors for next year?
Very exciting. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the appointments of Asia McKay and Paulina Carmona to serve as student advisors to the Board of Education for the 2022-2023 school year as presented in the May 24, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments, any additional on those students that are volunteering their time? We appreciate it. This is an all in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. We have two new board members, we won't see them until August.
August 9th, are they here?
Paulina's here.
Oh, my goodness.
Asia was here, but I know she saw her-
Is it Asia or Asia?
Asia. Asia was there with her mom.
I'm sorry, got that wrong.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
We look forward to talking to you in the fall. Enjoy your summer, and then we'll put you to work. Thank you very much, both of you, for taking the time. I know that that was a big time commitment to interview them. Moving on to overnight field trips, there are two items.
Board members, I do ask if these trips could be approved tonight. We have one trip in two weeks, and I understand the procedure, excuse me, I just asked if we could approve that tonight. But the first item is for the POMs team, they'll be going to Wheaton College for an overnight trip, June 7 through the 10th. This is an annual trip that's been done, where it brings all the best POMs in the world and actually in the state, you know, to learn the tricks and trade on how to be a better team and performer. And then the second trip is for the Girls Cross Country Team, they'll be staying over at the NIU Laredo Campus, Taff Field Campus, that's from August 12 through the 13th. So I do ask if the board would consider approving both trips today. All the permission slips, I'll let you see all the permission slips have been taken care of, everything is in order, we've spoken to other teachers, chaperones, everything's in order for the trips. So I do ask that the board approve the trips this evening.
Were there any questions submitted on either of these?
There were no questions submitted.
There was, Claire, I didn't submit a question, but the second trip does not cost $21,000 some dollars, it's $2,100.
Was it POMs or cross-country?
It was cross-country.
Okay.
I didn't say anything.
The cow was in the wrong place?
Yeah.
I guess I just have one question, did it come up quickly, or?
It did, it did, it came up, it came up rather quickly, and so, yeah, so we're here this evening, it did come up rather quickly, yeah. Just the whole paperwork, the situation, yes.
It was submitted before the last meeting, but we're just getting on this one, so.
Yeah, usually school trips for years, because they fundraise, and there's usually weeks, months, that's why I was kind of surprised that it popped up that quick.
And do we have any objections to approving them this evening? I hear the urgency, I know it's not our normal procedure, certainly, but because the one is certainly dated June 7, that's right around the corner. So do we have any objections to approving them this evening? I'm looking.
All the necessary paperwork, Ts are crossed, Is are dotted.
Yes.
There's the proper chaperone balance, right?
Yep.
Have any students asked for help paying for this?
No, they have not, it's going to be individually funded, they have not, at least to my knowledge, we have not been approached.
Okay, so that'd be okay for me.
Okay, so I think, let's read the agenda, or-
The resolution.
Thank you.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the overnight trip request for the POMs to go to the UDA camp at Wheaton College from June 7 to June 10, 2022, and the Girls Cross Country Team to go to the Girls Cross Country Team Overnight Camp at the NIU Laredo Taff Field Campus in Oregon, Illinois from August 12 to the 13, 2022, as presented in the May 24, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Welch, and would you need a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Truska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Seles.
Yes. The next item is transfer of interest from debt service to the education fund.
Yes, this is an annual request. At this time of year, the district transfers, typically transfers interest from our debt service fund to the education fund, so that's the fund that's our biggest fund and in the need of most resources. And the amount of interest earned this year in interest on investments in debt service was $4,036.
They didn't float a decimal point there? That's pretty low.
So it was just a cross-country trail?
That's pretty low.
It is very low.
Okay, here we go. Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the transfer of interest earnings in the debt service fund to the education fund as presented in the May 24, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Van Horst?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Truska?
Yes.
Ms. Seles.
Yes. And we do have, do you want to take these out of order at all? No, tentative budget, FY 23.
So this is a first read tonight, it's a very tentative budget. The actuals for the revenue and expenditure were reported as of April 30. So because there are still two months left in the fiscal year, there is definitely a lot of items that need to be revisited once we see where the June 30 actuals come in. Currently, if you look at the budget that's proposed in the board packet, the district is anticipating a small deficit next year. This will change as the budget is finalized over the next couple of months. There's always a lot of movement between now and where we finalize the budget in September. The Finance Advisory Council will meet before the June board meeting to review the tentative budget, and we will update the actuals, and we'll have May 31 actuals in the tentative budget at that time as well. At the June board meeting, we will ask the board to approve the tentative budget, because then we'll post it on our website for public display, but we'll still be making changes in July, and then typically just a few changes in August before the budget becomes final and adopted in September.
So this is a first read. Any questions?
I just want to say, I saw that the Clarion budget was increased, which is awesome. This last issue that we printed, we were able to do 16 pages with four in color, which is a lot more than we can usually do. So, yeah, that's greatly appreciated by all of the-
I did not get a copy of this last one, which is the one that says where everyone's going off to college.
Yeah, that is, there's, they're probably floating around the school, there's some in the public system right now. It's also available online on a Clarion website with all the students going to school.
So any comments or questions right now on the first read on the budget, from anyone? Okay, we have two more first reads, moving on to the intergovernmental agreement with West 40 for FY 23.
This is an annual IGA that we bring to the board. We've had an intergovernmental agreement with West 40, which is our regional office, which covers the continuum of programs that West 40 offers for our adverse students. There are four programs listed, West 40 Regional Safe School Program, which is used as an alternative to suspension, or really, we use it for expulsion, and we hold, and we have expulsion will place a student at the Regional Safe School Program. The West 40 High Needs Alternative Learning Opportunities Program, that's run through West 40 at West 40, and it's really for students who have significant social, emotional, focused academic program and mental health support and needs. We also have West 40 ALOP, Alternative Learning Opportunities Program, which is housed at RB. We started offering that this year. And then also, West 40 Alternative Learning Program Senior Plus, and we are currently not taking advantage of that. So how this works is the IGA covers all of these services, and we pay for the ones that we end up utilizing. There was a question submitted about the cost. The ALOP program for the High Needs ALOP Program and the Regional Safe School is $115 a day per student. And then the ALOP program that we offer here, the initial costs to get it up and running are more significant, we used Azure Three Funds to pay for that this year, that was a little over $70,000. And then after that, it's about $3,000 a year, which comes from our evidence-based funding, and then West 40 receives some funding from the state as well to offset those costs. So it's a minimal cost moving forward for RB.
And were there any questions on this besides that? None?
No, but we've been really, really happy with the impact that the ALOP program has been able to make on our students, is that correct?
Correct, you know, and if I could add, you know, this year they received about 60 referrals, currently 48, you know, are active, and these are students that have struggled with coming to school, with, you know, meeting their, you know, assignment, you know, obligations of classes, and we'd rather have a student here in school working with an advocate than not. So, you know, they were able to change many lives, they were able to help students recover credit, they were able to help students improve their attendance, they were able to help students just feel better about themselves and about coming to school. So I would like to thank Sam and Delisha and Joe, everybody from West 40, to help supporting, you know, our students, because students were impacted, you know? I saw it personally, I know they saw it personally, they met almost weekly, you know, with their students, followed up with phone calls, they had parent conferences, and these are things that would have fallen on us or on our counseling department, and they do a great job, but there's only so many hours in a day, we all know, right? So again, they've been a great help in reaching as many students as possible for the better.
And this was a good use of Azure Three Funds, I'm sorry.
Where currently is the West 40 Alternative School? How far are we sending kids to go there?
They're in flux, actually, right now, they're moving.
Yes, they are.
To a new building in...
That's a question you can answer at the next meeting if this is a first read.
For we, I think, okay, yeah.
We have a question now for next meeting.
Yeah, they're in heels.
Right.
Is that, okay.
There's not a little movement, there's been-
I'll just pre-ask my question up front for next meeting.
Any other pre-asked questions for next meeting? Anticipatory questions, if you will? Okay, thank you. And then our final item for a first read is the Press Plus policy issue.
Of Press Plus.
This was-
Yeah, this is just a first read, and the Policy Advisory Council is also being scheduled for before the June board meeting to review.
Right, to review this.
Okay, so any-
So when I look at this, the pink, with a line to it, is remove, and the green is add?
Correct. Correct.
We didn't have this when I was on.
And we did, it was a major addition or changes right around IASBO, so, you know, I haven't gone through this with a fine-tooth comb, but we, I mean, the last one was huge. But those were new policies, so we didn't make major changes to current policies. So that's a big difference.
A lot of these are five-year re-ups.
Right, so we, standing policies were not qualitatively changed.
Gotcha. And they do do a nice job of walking you through the questions you want to answer at the end of each item.
Yeah.
So again, first read, any questions, anticipatory or otherwise, we'll move to make motion on those at the next meeting.
Yeah, just, the last ones we read with a few lenses, one of them being an equitable lens, and Laura and I will do that again.
Thank you very much for your time. No additional new business, any visitor statements? Anyone here wish to make visitor statements at this point in the meeting, since we? Yes, please.
She's got to read her statement.
Okay. Oh, I do. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor comments are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent, and this is the booster's report, so thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jenny Hepker-Royer, and I have three children. My eldest, Elliot, graduated in the class of 2015, and after tomorrow, tomorrow's last final, this guy right here will be arising a senior, and my youngest will be an incoming freshman. So, yes, I am here tonight to, everyone sees the booster annual report, I'm going to be the booster president next year. I think a lot of you probably know that since 2015, I've tried to be as active as possible in boosters, but I've never been the president, so I'm, you know, drunk with power now, I guess. I'm actually really, really excited. There's a couple things in my three minutes I just want to point out, so, because this is kind of a big deal. For the last four or five years, we've funded requests somewhere between $15,000 and about $25,000. This year, we funded almost $71,000.
You're welcome.
Isn't that amazing?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, that's the good news. The kind of behind-the-scenes, like, a little bit, not bad news, but just behind-the-scenes story is that we are needing to recommit to getting more parent engagement, so that $70,000 is kind of like a team of like 15 parents. So that's one of the big things we'll do next year, is just sort of, you know, it's the pandemic, we all kind of hit pause, and we need to drag everyone back, and that's what we'll be committed to doing. And the only other thing I do want to point out, because something you said about, you know, not knowing if people could afford the camps, we're really excited to do a philanthropy request for boosters this year, so we're working with Mr. Mannan, and to try to identify, you know, students that might need that little extra help. You know, maybe they can't get the cool football cleats, or the nice goggles, or afford away camp, and boosters wants to be able to help with that, so we are working on that.
Thank you, thank you. And boosters and the other groups, and we'll ask you to come back in the fall, so this is, this is great, thank you, and it's, I've seen some of your fundraising work online, and it clearly has-
We were super excited about the $70,000, so we felt like we wanted to shout it to the wind, very.
Yeah, well, the Facebook online auction thing could not come at a better time, right? Like, we were, I can't even tell you how many tickets I bought, I never won anything, but I had a, I had so much fun.
You need to, yeah, keep going.
Watching Kristen spin the wheel and everything, right, every Sunday or Monday or whatever, I mean, it was, broke up the monotony of, you know, Zoom meetings, right?
We went over 18 months with no concession sales, and we had to do it, so, thank you for participating.
It was fun.
And thank you for the time.
Thank you for all your hard work and for all the outgoing cabinet officers, it is a lot of work.
It is, but it's well worth it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We did not have any additional discussion items requested. Do we have consideration of items for future meetings from anyone? No? And then we can move on to matters for closed session. Tonight, we have appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student